Good evening. We love when we have a big crowd to celebrate, many happy faces. Good evening and welcome, and thank you for being here tonight with us. I call the meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock on March 6, 2018. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, our student school board representatives will read our mission, vision, and core value statements. We have Chad from Auburn High School and Steven from Blacksburg High School. Go ahead, guys.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement, and lifelong learning and cultural diversity. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you to both. Next item is adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
Stand with.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Alright, thanks. Excited to see everyone here tonight. This is one of my favorite nights of the year whenever we're recognizing our state champions, and we have plenty of them to recognize tonight, so we're very excited about that. And I know we have Christiansburg Elementary School here as well, and excited to hear about your school today. A budget update for the board. Last night, the board supervisors met, and Mr. Meadows, the county administrator, recommended an additional $1.5 million for our schools for next year. It was not the $2.3 that we requested, but it was the $1.5. We're very optimistic that we can get to a possible 1.5% pay raise for our employees with that amount, but we'll be discussing that later. I've been going throughout the county to all of our schools, my yearly faculty meetings, been going over the budget with our teachers, talking about the new state standards, the new graduation requirements, and our focus for the future here in Montgomery County. And I think I've gone to about 12, and I think I have about seven to go, so I'm excited. In fact, CES, I think you're next week, right? Okay. Alright. We're between sports right now, between the winter and spring sports, so getting ready to gear up with spring sports. So not many athletic activities in the past week, but this past week, we did have the Youth Art and Music Month celebration here in the central office, and we had art and music displays from all of our schools in our division. It was just a great, great night. Also, it was a celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday all around the division. I was able to go to following branch and read to pre-K students, and that was a lot of fun. And our bands, district assessments were last week, and Christiansburg and Blacksburg High School bands both rated superior, and just very proud of them. And so, a lot of great things that are happening. Alright, so, I think I'm stuffed.
Thank you. Next item is honors, awards, and recognitions.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Ms. Morgan is here with her teachers and students from Christiansburg Elementary School to tell us about their school. Ms. Morgan.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melinda Morgan. I'm principal at Christiansburg Elementary. It's my pleasure to introduce to the board several of our students, faculty, and staff that are here with us. In addition, Mr. Lewis, who is at the primary building. We have that unusual connection where, you know, we share students and we share scores, but we're disconnected from each other. So Mr. Lewis is also here with us tonight, so I'd like to take a second and let all of our faculty and staff and Mr. Lewis stand. They work hard every day. Tonight, you're going to hear from several of our students about some of their favorite things at CES so far this year. These are activities created with the goal to make CES a unique and compelling environment for learning and growing. Then we'll close with a short video that showcases CES as its culture and our commitment to those we serve, our students. Tonight, we present just a small sample of our dedicated staff and faculty who individually and together work with their unique talents and input to create lasting results for memorable experiences that truly make a difference in each of our students. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce first Ms. Leila Haley. She is a fifth grade student, and she is going to speak with you briefly about PAC Pride.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board. My name is Leila Haley, and I am a fifth grade student in Ms. Hilliard's class at Christiansburg Elementary School. This evening, we want to present some of our favorite things about CES. My favorite thing is what we call Coyote PAC Pride. It is a feeling of being part of something bigger than yourself. It is helping your neighbor and supporting each other. PAC Pride is more than just a feeling, it's an attitude, like being positive and doing your best. PAC Pride is like being part of your school family and looking out for one another and being respectful for each other. Coyote PAC Pride is why I love CES. Thank you.
I am Megan Hawley, a fourth grade teacher at Christiansburg Elementary. This year, CES organized its first school-wide STEAM Day. Each grade level had a text and a bill to complete. Students worked collaboratively to complete that. We also invited our parents in who have a STEAM-related job, so we had a gentleman presenting virtual reality, we had a science professor, and civil engineers. So I'm here to introduce Minami Frukawa, who's going to talk about STEAM Day.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board. My name is Minami Frukawa, fourth grade student in Ms. Hollings' class. My favorite was STEAM Day at CES, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. We had an entire day of fun and interesting activities like building bridges, coding on the computers, virtual reality experiences, and more. My favorites were the virtual goggles and the Rube Goldberg's. STEAM Day was an opportunity to learn in a different way and experiment with fun activities. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mariah Moore. I'm the librarian at CES. I'm honored to introduce our student representative from the WCES Daily Announcement Crew, Jasper Moore. No relation. Like all the students on our crew, Jasper works very hard every day to make sure that the announcements are informative and professional while also bringing their fun personalities.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board. My name is Jasper Moore, fifth grade student in Ms. Bull's class. WCES is brand-new to the school this year. Fifth grade students are selected by their teachers to be part of the WCES crew. Each day, we present a video of the morning announcements, including upcoming events, activities, birthdays, the pledge of allegiance, and a joke of the day. We get real-world experience writing, editing video, working with green screen technology, and reporting the news on camera. WCES is a great opportunity to learn and grow. Thank you.
I'm Stacy Tradeway. I'm the instructional specialist at both CES and CPS. I'm new to the division this year, but I've got to say, every day, I'm so grateful to work with the fantastic staff and students at our schools. This is Danny Delgado. He is so enthusiastic about everything in our school. We thought he'd be a great person to introduce our video presentation, so take it away, Danny.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board. At this time, I would like to present to you a video that shows what Christiansburg Elementary is all about, about how our teachers make learning fun, about... About Coyote PAC Pride, about many fun learning activities this year, about students, teachers, and staff in the building, and about who we are. This...we are the Coyotes. This is PAC Pride, and this is Christiansburg Elementary.
Being new to Christiansburg Elementary in Montgomery County, I met with our faculty and staff this summer and set a theme for our year, which was bright: Building Relationships, Instructional Growth, High Expectations, and Team. Every day, we make positive strides in working toward those goals in support of children. We have a very dedicated faculty and staff who work hard and give 100% daily. Welcome to Christiansburg Elementary.
The community at CES, it's a really warm group of people who look out for each other, and it's not just the teachers, it's the kids too. We're a welcoming environment where, whether it's a student on our roster or not, we're going to help them to the best of our ability.
Not just the 22 that we have in our rooms every day. We want all of our students to be motivated, engaged, encouraged, and empowered as they go to school every day.
They feel comfortable making mistakes, supporting each other, supporting each other in good and in bad.
So one of the things that I think makes CES a very special place is just the level of energy that this entire building has.
People here, they are encouraging, respectful, and they will push you to your goals so you can get, so you can raise your goals higher and higher.
Our students have opportunities to learn in many different ways. I always like to think the more engaged, the less off-task. So small groups, activities that get students motivated and moving.
Whenever you walk up and down our hallways, you can see kids up out of their seats, not off-task, but they're engaged. They are moving around their room, they are singing, they are dancing, they are chanting. You can see the energy, I mean, it's creeping out into the hallways every single day.
We have great support. It's a family here, everybody does support each other, and they're willing to go that extra mile for me.
Community is huge at CES, not just with the teachers and the students, but with the faculty together. So it's been great to see the growth with community and the way teachers work together and how we do everything we can to get the job done.
PAC Pride is about family. The PAC is our family, and we're very proud of all of the members of our family and the achievements that they make.
Coyote pride is like, you have to be responsible.
Respectful, fairness, helpful.
Helping out your friends, like, helping out your teachers if they really need it.
It's the type of place that you don't mind getting up and going to it. That helps a whole lot.
It means taking pride in what you do and your work and your actions daily, being responsible, showing good character to one another.
Christiansburg Elementary has been in the community for over 50 years. We think it is very important to give back to our community. So our safety patrol members have had food drives down at Kroger, we have done Christmas angels to help families in need.
One of my favorite events at CES is called Welcome to the PAC. Right after school starts, we invite all of our third grade families to CES for a night of time to learn more about third grade.
DARE is a special program that fifth graders get to participate in, usually in the fall. Officer Klein comes and teaches each class during guidance time, about 10 lessons. And what's really cool is there was a couple winners from the DARE essay contest per each class, and the top two got to read their essays in front of the whole fifth grade and their parents at the special DARE graduation.
We have a lot of creative students in our building, and we like to showcase those on fine arts nights. We celebrate with music and art, and we try to display one or two artworks from each child.
WCES is a new program that we've started this year. We have some fifth graders that have been nominated by their teachers to come and present our daily news. It means a lot to these kids, and it means a lot to the other students to be able to see their peers doing this as well.
So at CES, we had a very exciting event called Snowy Night of Learning, where we invited third, fourth, and fifth grade students and their parents who wanted to come and celebrate learning and reading with us.
STEAM Day was an excellent opportunity for teachers to work with students throughout the school, to teach them about science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics in many different ways, including building projects, coding on the computer, and also working with different activities and games in the classroom.
So one of the things that we've implemented this year is an after-school learning academy. Our goal is to reach those students who are very close to achieving success with our state standards, but need just a little push to get them over the top to where they need to be.
We engage, we encourage, we empower. At Christiansburg Elementary, our goal isn't to make a difference in just a few, but to make a difference in every student, every day.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board. Thank you for your continued support of Christiansburg Elementary, and our students have a little something for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great. Great job, guys.
You Coyotes rock.
There's a red truck in the parking lot with your lights on. The license plate is VGY5852.
Great job. Excellent, excellent, excellent.
Picture with them, Mr. Gray?
Can students come back up? Students. Oh, Lord.
Uh-oh.
No.
You don't have to.
Really don't.
Yeah.
Come on up, guys. Stay right here.
Come right over here, line up. Those are wonderful speeches.
Okay, at this time, Dr. Graham, will you come to the podium to assist with the honors, awards, and recognitions, please?
So we're very pleased at this time to bring our honors, awards, and recognitions, and we will begin tonight by having Mr. Pauley come up and present the Fall and Winter State Champions.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, members of the board. Actually, I'm going to be introducing the people who will be introducing the state champions. We do have a number of Fall and Winter State Champions from Auburn High School, Blacksburg High School, and Christiansburg High School. And so here to present initially will be the athletic directors, Mr. Domine from Auburn, Mr. Lyle from Blacksburg, and Mr. Cromer from Christiansburg, and we'll start with Mr. Domine, and then just follow-in kind right after that. So Mr. Domine, take it away, please.
First off, I'd like to tell you how happy I am to be here and how much I appreciate the recognitions that you give to these fine student athletes. If it seems like we're making a regular thing of this, it's because we are. This is Auburn's fifth consecutive season with at least one state champion. Auburn was recognized this past winter by the Roanoke Times as having won more state championships in the calendar year of 2017 than any other school in the Timesland area. This past fall season was our best yet, with three state championship teams as well as two individuals. The first team I'd like to bring up is the Boys Cross Country Team. The Auburn Boys Cross Country Team has now won three consecutive state championships. They entered the state championship this year as the prohibitive favorite, and they did not disappoint with four of the top 10 finishers. There was very little suspense, and this includes the individual state champion Nolan Harris. With us tonight, we have Branson Weeks, Brandon Turman, Nolan Harris, Jacob Hurd, Adam Downs, Eddie Tickle, and our coach, Laura Daniels. The second team I'd like to bring up is our Girls Cross Country Team. This team has a little different history to them than the Boys program. The Girls Cross Country Team won their first-ever state championship this past fall. This is after coming in second for the last two years, including a one-point loss in 2016. The 2017 team was known for having a very balanced and deep team, which is what led to their state championship. Here tonight, we have Caitlin Domine, Olivia Smoot, Lilly Messner, Jessica Musselman, Grace Hall, Haley Wade, and again, Laura Daniels. And the third and final team I'd like to bring up is our Boys Golf Team. There is really quite a story behind this championship. This year, the VHSL changed their rules so that instead of advancing two teams from each region to the state championship, they would only advance one. And being in the same region as two-time defending state champ George With, a team that beat us by 27 strokes in the district championship, made for a daunting task. However, in the region championship, we came back, played absolutely lights-out, beat George With there by two strokes, and went on to the state championship where no one could hang with them. They won by 27 strokes, a runaway victory led by state medalist Cotter Vance. Up here tonight are Mike Royal, Slater Linkus, Cotter Vance, Jensen Gore, and the State Coach of the Year, Jeff Gandy. We'd also like to recognize our two individual state champions. If I could have Nolan Harris back up here. Nolan Harris broke away toward the midpoint of the 3.1-mile cross-country race and ran away from the field from there, winning the championship comfortably. Cotter Vance was right there with the leaders after the first day. The second day, he shot a 66.
Ooh, Connor.
To win the individual state championship. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. On behalf of Blacksburg High School and the Athletic Department, let me just thank all of you for taking this time to recognize the state champions in your busy agenda. Let me begin by recognizing our golf team. We have three of our members that competed in the state championship. Gentlemen. It's my privilege and honor in representing Coach Maddox this evening. He could not be with us. He's down in Roanoke coaching our MAC team, so Coach sends his regards. He was going to try to get here, but he won the first round and advanced to the second round in his MAC. So this is the team's second straight state championship and the school's sixth state championship, historically speaking. Representing the team this evening, Soren Winisterfer. Now, I can't tell the two Winisterfers apart. Soren was the state tournament medalist. Ben Carroll and Jonah Winisterfer. We're very proud of these young men. Next, I'd like to introduce our 2017 state championship girls cross-country team and their coach, Brandon Baer. Coach Baer has taken on a daunting task. He is working with our Boys and Girls Cross Country Program, where they have approximately 80 boys and girls on both teams, or collectively, I should say. When he goes into the indoor track season, he's working with 120 student athletes in the indoor track program. Coach Baer's then working with about 130 in his outdoor program, so he's working with a lot of kids. And the tradition has continued. Brandon just won the girls cross-country's seventh consecutive state title, and that ties a state record, by the way. Historically, it's the 18th state championship, and that also is a state record. The team won the at-large bid at the Nike Southeast Championships in Cary, North Carolina, qualifying for the regionals in Portland, Oregon. The team traveled out to Portland, where they finished 17th in the Nationals, and that was for the second year in a row, and it was the team's fifth consecutive appearance in Portland, Oregon. Representing the team tonight, we have, I'm going to give you the place finishers. We have Caitlin Wolf, who was the Class Four runner-up in the tournament. Eileen Edwards placed third. Sophia Link placed sixth. Emily Fitch placed 15th. And also with us tonight, we have Simone Gunnet and Eliza Stowe.
Dr. Meyer and the board, I appreciate y'all having us in here tonight to recognize our wrestling team as state champions. I will have to say that this is my first board meeting ever, and I was told when I was come tonight that I might have to say something, so we'll do it. But if this past February 17th, our wrestling team won its 17th consecutive state championship. If those guys will come on up, please. If the team will come on up, please. I want to recognize Coach Warden, who's our first-year head coach for us and his staff. We were blessed to hire him. I didn't hire him, but I wasn't involved with that, but about a year ago, and then he has kept the tradition alive. Coach, thank you very much for what you're doing for our program. On a side note, I coached football for years at Seaburg. I didn't get a chance to watch a lot of practices, but when I went in, I was able to watch these guys practice some and go to meets, and outstanding just work ethic and was real proud of those guys. But like I said, the Region 3D champion on February 17th won the state championship, went into the 3A state championship. We had 13 of 14 weight classes represented, and we wound up with nine wrestlers in the finals. And of those nine wrestlers, seven of them won state championships. Two were runner-ups, and we won the title by more than 100 points. So I think we should give them another hand for that. What I'd like to do is just briefly, just read off the individual state champions. Our seniors, Eric Eva was a state champion. Nick Giantonio was a state champion. Marshall Keller was a state champion. And Xander Whitehurst, state champion. Those are our seniors. Juniors, Ty Quack was a state champion. Andrew Morgan was fourth. Andy Smith was second in the state. And then sophomores, Brandon Crowder was a state champion. Garrett Cution was a state champion. And Nathan Warden was a runner-up. So congratulations, guys, very much.
At this time, if Adam Simpson would come forward. He is Assistant Principal at Blacksburg High School. And we'll introduce a Blacksburg High School student who's nominated to the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. Blacksburg High School is proud to recognize Lilly Zoo for her nomination to the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. This program was established to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished high school seniors. Her nomination comes from Virginia's Superintendent of Public Instruction, Dr. Stephen Staples. Lilly is one of only 20 students that have been nominated from across the state. Her selection as a Virginia nominee recognizes not only her scholastic achievement, but also her demonstrated leadership in service to others. After high school, Lilly plans to attend college and major in biomedical engineering. Congratulations, Lilly.
If Mr. Polly, our Director of Secondary Education, will come forward, he will explain our Seniors of the Month program.
Thank you again, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. Now, it is my pleasure to present Chris Stewart, Principal of Auburn High School, followed by Adam Simpson, Assistant Principal of Blacksburg High School, followed by Megan Atkinson, Assistant Principal of Christiansburg High School, and finally Matt McDaniel, Assistant Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. We'll start with Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer. It's my privilege and honor to present to you our March Senior of the Month at Auburn High School. I'll ask Allison Spar to come on up. Allison's here with her parents, Michael and Holly Spar. They're more than welcome to come on up as well. She's also here with her brother, Michael, as well. I'd like to just take a moment and read a quote to you from a teacher. Allison is a student who has demonstrated a great work ethic and true desire to do quality work. Whether preparing a performance or a work of visual art, Allison is always receptive to advice and criticism. She frequently seeks out teacher opinions and assistance to develop and improve her skills, as well as her finished pieces. Most importantly, Allison is a tremendously focused worker, never rushing through the process, but concentrating on each part as an important step to the ultimate goal. Mrs. Spar's commitment to the Fine Arts Department at AHS is far above and beyond what is expected of her. She is often the first one here and the last one to leave. Allison always has a smile on her face and a great attitude towards other and life in general. It has been our pleasure to have had the honor of teaching her, and we are proud to have Allison as part of the AHS Fine Arts Department and community. Her work ethic, desire to learn, and motivation to do quality work will be a tremendous asset in whatever she does. Congratulations, Allison. I'd also like to recognize our December Senior of the Month, who was unable to be with us in December because of basketball. I'd ask that Chase Phillips come on up. Chase is here tonight with his parents, Josh and Karen Phillips. They're coming up as well. I'd also like to just read a quick statement. Chase is an excellent student at Auburn High School. His aptitude for U.S. government is rivaled by only a few students. He is curious and asks many questions to quench his curiosity. He thinks critically and is genuinely concerned about the problems that face our nation. He is also involved in sports and academic competition at AHS. Congratulations, Chase. Blacksburg High School is proud to recognize George Tatum as our Senior of the Month for March. Tonight, George is accompanied by his mother, Claire. George Tatum has demonstrated for the entirety of his academic years at Blacksburg High School a genuine love of learning and passion for both creative and academic endeavors. He is a voracious consumer of politics and global events. He is a gifted writer, a talented actor, and a truly gifted pianist. Most importantly, he is grounded in his many successes and talents by a personality that is both outgoing to encourage and support others and humble. George sets the standard of what it means to be a leader because he selflessly shares of his time and talents with those around him. He is a model student, a superb young man of character, and an exceptional member of the Bruin family. After high school, George hopes to attend Brown University, with whom he has a phone interview in about 30 minutes, and major in history. Congratulations, George, and good luck.
Good evening. Last month, our Senior of the Month was actually swimming in the regional meet and won, was unable to be recognized before the school board. So it is my pleasure to inform the board that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for February was Megan Cummins. At this time, I would like to ask Megan and her family to come forward to be recognized. Megan is a wonderful student. She is so inquisitive and never shies away from a complex or difficult question or problems. She is truly a pleasure to have in class and is always willing to help a fellow classmate. Megan is a hard worker who always sets high goals for herself. She's a good teammate who looks out for and encourages others to do their best, too. While on the CHS swim team, she has qualified and scored at our regional championships and state championships for all four years. She currently holds school records in the 200-yard freestyle, 500-yard freestyle, 200-yard freestyle relay, and 400-yard freestyle relay. Her hard work, determination, and drive, both in the classroom and in the pool, earned her a scholarship to be a student athlete at George Mason University this fall, where she will be studying bioengineering. Congratulations, Megan Cummins. It is my pleasure to inform the board that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for March is a familiar name, Marshall Keller. At this time, I would like to ask Marshall and his family to come forward to be recognized. Marshall Keller is one of those all-around good people. He has a great heart, an amazing sense of humor, and has such a humbleness about him. Marshall is not only a three-time All-American wrestler, he is also an exemplary student and an amazing chef. He always arrives to class with a smile on his face, and he actively works to create a positive classroom atmosphere. His work ethic, leadership qualities, and willingness to help others separate him from most. Marshall is going to do incredible things when he leaves CHS. Next year, Marshall will be attending Princeton University to study economics and wrestle. Congratulations, Marshall Keller.
Dr. Meyer, members of the board, I'd like to introduce you to Eastern Montgomery's January Senior of the Month, Ashby Tyler Mannan. Tyler has lettered in football, basketball, track and field, cross-country, choir, and academics. He plans to attend New River Community College for two years and then transfer to Virginia Tech to major in computer science. EMHS Choral Director Russ Preston had this to say about our Senior of the Month. Tyler is a young man who exemplifies excellence as a student. He is always ready to go the extra mile for his group and his peers. Tyler has traveled and performed with the chorus in semesters where he was not technically enrolled in class. If there is a need in staging, video, or extra preparation of work for events, this young man is always willing to help. Tyler is welcoming and supportive to fellow students, and his presence always lends toward peaceful harmony. Tyler's work ethic is excellent in any field he endeavors, he undertakes. Tyler does not have to be seen as the best in class. He feels that his work is still valuable. In other words, this activity is about the group more than him. If all students possessed the same spirit of cooperation and excellence as this student, the school would be, as a whole, positively influenced and enhanced. I would also like to introduce you to our March Senior of the Month, Kayla Brianna Snyder. Kayla is the Secretary and Treasurer of the Beta Club. She's involved in DECA, YOVOSO, FBLA, Interact Band. She also plays volleyball, softball, basketball, cheerleading, and track and field. She plans to attend Radford and major in business. EMHS math teacher Lisa Bissy had this to say about our Senior of the Month. The thing that I love about Kayla Snyder is her attitude. Unlike some students, she is able to take criticism and then use that to improve her work. In math, most of her mistakes are careless little things like missing a negative or adding when she should have multiplied. But when she truly doesn't understand something, she's willing to come in and get extra help. She works hard and never gives up. Her "just keep swimming" attitude makes her one of my favorite seniors.
This time, I would like to ask our lead art teacher, Carrie Lyons, to come forward to talk to us about Youth Art Month.
Good evening. On behalf of the art teachers of MCPS, I'd like to thank you for your support of Youth Art Month. Our countywide foreign arts night was a wonderful celebration of art and music. The pieces are still up in the hallway of the school board office in case you didn't get a chance to see it. On Sunday, February 25th, the Scholastic Art Awards were held at the Fine Arts Center for the New River Valley. Tonight, we are recognizing seven art students from Blacksburg High School who are awarded Gold Keys at this competition. First, I'd like to recognize their art teacher, Katie Hypes, and her sidekick, Zoe. Katie has worked tirelessly to get her students to this level of success, and we're really, really proud to have Katie with us. Her students are Raina Abdallah, who actually, sorry, Rania, who actually was awarded two Gold Keys, Sophie Arnensen, Claire Morton, Shayla Utzinger, Ella Warnick, Natalie Wheeler. And each region selects five works of art that will be further judged by a panel in New York City. The final student that we are going to recognize, Saorin Winisterfer. His work was chosen as an American Vision nominee for the Southwest Virginia region, so his work will go on.
At this time, I would like to ask Brad Epperali, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Town of Christiansburg, to come forward and share some information about Jill's Buddy Camp.
Well, good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. Again, my name is Brad Epperali, and I do have the privilege of serving as the Town of Christiansburg's Parks and Recreation Director. I have Mackenzie Graham here with me. She served as a buddy for our Buddy Camp for three years, and Mackenzie will talk here in just a few minutes. I'm here tonight, I want to recognize your Special Education Department and some of the key members within your department. In 2015, Dr. Tommy Barber, Executive Director of Jill's Buddy Camp Education Foundation, and I met with the newly hired Dr. Pat Nelson, Director of Special Education, as well as Dr. Julie Legan. At that time, we discussed the possibility of joining forces to develop Jill's Buddy Camp for the children of Montgomery County. I'm happy to say that this partnership with the Town of Christiansburg's Parks and Recreation Department and the Montgomery County Public Schools has been on display for the past three summers, and it seems to get stronger every year. What is Jill's Buddy Camp, you might ask? Jill's Buddy Camp is a two-week camp in the summer for children with disabilities within Montgomery County. During this two-week camp, we have individual and small-group activities in speech, language, fine and gross motor skills, technology, and social skills development. We also go on a variety of We also go on a variety of field trips throughout the region, and the best part is, is it's free to all the campers. During the camp, each camper has at least one teenage buddy, and in many cases, two teenage buddies, that will partner with them and go every step of the way with them through their two-week period of the camp. In this time, the camper forms a personal relationship with their buddy; in most cases, that bond's unbreakable. The buddy also gains many things from the camp. They receive a very fulfilling 40-plus hours of volunteer experiences that give them the opportunity to befriend the camper. They also get to witness professionals in the education and recreational fields, along with exploring and initiating many career opportunities such as early childhood education, special education, speech pathology, adaptive physical education, school guidance, therapeutic recreation, and many others. Jill's Buddy Camp was named in honor of Jill Shenee Bailey. Jill was a buddy for many years within the Salem Education Foundation of Buddy Camp. Jill worked with children with cochlear implants and served as a buddy for many years. Unfortunately, Jill and her unborn child tragically drowned in 2012. At this time, it was decided by Dr. Tommy Barber, the developer of Buddy Camp, to rename the camp Jill's Buddy Camp. And we wanted to make sure that it would continue to grow throughout our area, the state, as well as nationally. In a way, we know that Jill is with us at every camp, and she would appreciate what we do. There is a partnership that comes into effect between us in 2015. As I mentioned, the Town of Christiansburg Parks and Recreation Department and the Montgomery County Public Schools Special Education Department decided that we are definitely stronger together than apart. By working together, we're able to provide various resources that neither agency could do on their own. This is what partnership and local government should always be about. Through this partnership, the one that gains the largest impact are the members of our community. In my 20-plus years, this camp is probably one of the greatest enjoyments of my career, to be honest with you. I look at it, and many times, as a director, I'm in an administrative role, so a lot of times, I'm not in the programming aspect as I once was, so I'm sitting behind a desk. During this two-week camp, I go straight out with the campers, and it really makes me understand why I got into the field to begin with. I wanted to mention that, you know, you should be very proud of the educators and staff that you have, because they're second to none. They are professional, they're devoted, determined, passionate about what they do for the children of Montgomery County, and I know you, as a school board, are very proud of them. You should also be proud of the students that you have within your schools. The buddies that come and donate and devote 40-plus hours of their time, volunteer time, to work this camp is just amazing. Almost 100% of the buddies have been in the Montgomery County Public Schools' education cycle all the way through. What's even more amazing is that we have a large majority of the buddies that repeat year after year. One of those buddies, as I mentioned, is here with me tonight. That's Ms. Mackenzie Graham. She served as a buddy for all three years that we've had Jill's Buddy Camp. I would like to recognize her with much gratitude and also give her an opportunity to speak about her experiences through the camp. Mackenzie.
For the past three years, I have been honored to be a part of Jill's Buddy Camp. As a volunteer, we are paired with a special-needs child and get to be their buddy for the two weeks. During these two weeks, there are many fun activities that the children get to experience that benefits them both socially and cognitively. Some of these activities the children have never experienced before, so they are sometimes frightened or hesitant to take part in the activity. The buddy is able to reassure them and help them acclimate into participating in the activity. Over the three years that I have volunteered at this camp, I have been fortunate to be able to see some of the same children year after year. I have watched some of the children mature socially and become more interactive over the last few years. In some children, we can even see small changes during the two weeks they are there. In the two-week span of the camp, the volunteer counselors are able to get to know and connect with their buddy. Some of the children who have attended for the past few years are sometimes able to recognize their buddy from the year before. The camp not only benefits the children, but it also benefits the volunteer counselors. As a volunteer counselor, I have a better understanding of the challenges these children face. Through my interactions with the children, I have learned to be positive, interact with them, be consistent and flexible, and provide communication that is visual, audible, and tactile. This experience has guided me to a definite decision on my career, which will be early childhood special ed. If it weren't for these camps, some of these children would have never had the experience and growth that these activities provide them. This camp also exposes the children to the community, safety measures, and personnel that are in place to protect them. I am very thankful for the opportunity that Jill's Buddy Camp has provided me and hope it continues so that other children and volunteer counselors can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. I appreciate your efforts, your time to make this camp successful. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Nelson to come forward, and I would like to present her with a plaque that I would like for her to be able to hang up in the Special Education Department so that we can talk about this great camp, show the community about this great camp, and also the partnership that we share together.
So, I want to say this partnership has absolutely been a perfect example of how communities can work together to support all their children in their community, and it's worked out beautifully, and it's just been a win-win. But tonight, I also have asked some of our staff and our volunteer students to be here tonight to be recognized as well, because they are in the trenches and working every day, as you have heard, with our children, and has made a difference. Thank you.
At this time, we will take a 10-minute break so that all of our board members may congratulate the people who were recognized tonight. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our public address. At this time, and at each of our regularly scheduled meetings, the school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining Montgomery County, pertaining public education in Montgomery County. Any speaker is allowed to three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. I have two individuals sign up to speak to us. As of now, our first one is Martha and Stalling. Please come forward, say your name, your address, and then you have three minutes.
I know, I got to talk fast.
I know. It's hard to fit in three minutes.
I'm Martha Ann Stallings, and I live at 1920 Cascades Road in Blacksburg. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I left Montgomery County Schools in May of 2005 to take a job at Tech, but before that, I spent 17 years as a teacher and five years at center office with staff development. However, I'm here tonight in my role as a steering committee member of the Dialogue on Race and the Chair of the Education Committee. It's my pleasure to work with Penny on the Steering Committee and Guna and Connie in the Education Group. On behalf of the Steering Committee, I would like to thank you for your positive involvement with Dialogue on Race. Even though many of you have heard this before, as a reminder, the Dialogue on Race's mission is to create a forum that examines racial issues articulated by the African-American community and then to develop and implement solutions. With the Education Group, we want to discuss goals and ways that we can work collaboratively with the school board. The education issues are many, so I'm just going to skip past those, but over the past three years, through our collaboration, things have improved in all of our goals, and I would like to publicly thank you for your involvement and support of that. Diversity hiring is one of them. In the last three years, instead of 4% of new teachers being minority folks, we now have 10%. The Second Community Dinner is going to take place, which is a wonderful way for the prospective educators to know what the community values. The achievement gap continues to decrease, and I understand this is, continues to be a focus of your academic work. Discipline continues to be a focus with a more consistent approach to students. In particular, I'm very thrilled to know that you've come up with a policy. When we look at things that students sometimes say, like the N-word, and we know that there's now an educational component that takes place between the principal and the student. The Summer Summit was a huge success. We had over 200 people, and I would say mostly because we had the school system support us, get the principals there, get the students there, and the parents around the table to discuss important issues. A minute, okay. Very importantly, at the summit, you listened, you heard, and you took action. That's all we could ask for. Student voices continue to be important. As I see here this evening, you support the Black Awareness Clubs. We are getting ready to have our third annual high school social justice conference at Virginia Tech that started when Dr. Meyer came, and we hope some of you can attend that. I'll give you the date later. Okay, and I would like to thank Carl Pauley for his continued support of that event. Finally, we had our annual Dialogue on Race Winter Summit, and that was in January at Christiansburg Middle that was supported by the principals, the technology staff, and everyone involved, and it was a success. Yes, the list is long, and so is our gratitude. The events you have been involved with have brought us closer together with a common goal of success for all students. Do we need more African-American role models? Of course. Do we need, is there more work to do? Of course, there is. We thank you for your support.
Thank you, Martha.
I made it.
You were good. Three seconds to spare. Next individual signed up to speak tonight is Cara Daggett. Please come forward, say your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Cara Daggett. I live at 1733 Sage Lane in Blacksburg. I just moved here last summer. I have two kids at Kipps Elementary. Thank you for allowing me to talk. I'm here today to talk about recess. It's an issue that's near and dear to my heart. And on March 1st, the Virginia House followed the Virginia Senate to almost unanimously pass SB 273, which empowers us as parents and teachers and the school board to now count recess as instructional time. And the way, maybe you can help me understand it, but the way I read that is an acknowledgement that we've gone too far in the direction of standardized testing and stealing time away from our children to have unstructured play outdoors and trying to put that power back in the hands of you and us as a community to give our kids more time to play. And so, in part, I'm here on behalf of my second grader, who tells me almost every week, "I love Kipps, I love my teacher, I love my principal, but I'm inside all day, and I feel like I'm sealed up inside," is what he says. He gets, he's blocked about 30 minutes at 3:10 PM. He's a second grader, which means he has over six hours of structured time. And when I go volunteer in the classroom, the teachers acknowledge this is really hard on them. And what they've had to replace recess with is basically dancing in front of a screen and trying to have brain breaks like that, but it just is not the same as letting kids have unstructured playtime outside with fresh air. And so, I'd like to sort of ask you, what can we do as a community to take advantage of SB 273? I think we're probably all aware that best practices show not just my common sense as a parent and teacher common sense, but all the studies show, the CDC has said, American Academy of Pediatrics has said, that our children need more than 20 or 30 minutes of recess, and countries like Japan and Finland have over an hour a day for children to play outside. They set it up where they might have an hour of structured teaching and then let them have breaks. And I would just, I'm curious to know how we can take advantage of this and give our kids, at least maybe give them a second recess, you know, 40 minutes, 45 minutes. Thank you. Oh, look, I have time.
Thank you. At this time, these were the only two individuals signed up to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment address to the board at this time? Seeing none, public address closed. Next item on our agenda is consent items. If there's nothing to be pulled, we will consider them as approved. Any questions regarding any consent items? They are all field trips. I have no question, then consent agenda is approved. The next item is paying our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills? I have a motion and second, any questions regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? We pay our bills. Next item is our business section of the meeting, and first one is our board member reports. Board members who would like to jump in. Ms. Barton, would you like to share?
Sure. I had the pleasure of attending the schools in my district at Eastern Montgomery and Shawsville, so I was able to go visit Mr. Hippel at Shawsville Middle, Ms. Boils at Eastern Montgomery Elementary, and Mr. Knott at Eastern Montgomery High School. I have to encourage the public and the board members, if you guys have not made a trip to visit these schools yet, please, please do so. I can't tell you how encouraged and how excited I was to see the engagement within the communities coming together down there. These principals have been putting together programs, especially Mr. Hippel at the middle school, that's getting the community involved with the students, getting them more active with the literacy nights, the math nights, the science nights. And it's just a really, really good thing going on down there. So, I would encourage you all, if you hadn't had the opportunity to get down there at some point, to try to get down there and see how special those schools really are and how they're coming along. And if you haven't had a chance to go through the high school, which I know we've had some events there, but one thing I was really impressed with is the murals on the walls that the graduating classes get to do as a part of their, a part of being in that school, and they leave a mark there, which I didn't know of any other high schools that did that. I thought that was really neat, a neat thing. And I also got a serenade by the band for a personal concert, so I felt very, and they did a great job, so I was really pleased to go visit them and look forward to working with them and helping them along with all the other schools in the district as well.
I definitely liked the murals and ITs, Mr. Knott, in the past before, you know, you're going to run out of wall space, he said, "No, we won't."
No, he's already, he's already, he's already got that planned out, yes, I can assure you.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Thank you, Ms. Barton. Anybody else would like to jump in?
I can go now.
Sure, Ms. Graham.
I know nobody's left here, but I wanted to certainly thank Blacksburg High School for hosting our last work session that we had there and sharing with us the Year of the Artist. We were serenaded by the Madrigals, and then one of the theater students that we recognized as a Senior of the Month was part of a presentation that we got to see as well. And then the grand finale to that was the Culinary Arts. Students fixed us dinner, which was absolutely yummy. Including beets in the salad, which I'm not a beet person.
And Marty and I don't eat beets.
That's right. It was really good.
They were very good.
It was really good.
We just needed, we just needed more, more of them.
That's right, right. I'm going to try to fix it now. So, I wanted to say thank you to BHS for hosting us and treating us so well. I also recently volunteered at Kipps Elementary. I was doing a sewing project with one of the art classes, and the reason I bring that up is because it was with fifth graders, and I ended up having some great conversations with them. They're, they were very appreciative and inquisitive, and it happened to be, you know, Black History Month, so I had the button on that we received from the art department at BHS. And so, we had a great conversation of what they had learned about several key people, key African-Americans in history. But they were extremely appreciative, and I enjoyed talking to them. They had great manners, which is, you know, something that a lot of people these days complain about with our young people, but they were absolutely wonderful to work with. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Anybody else who would like to jump in? Ms. Barton?
So, most of the month was spent on the MCF Poetry Contest, which ended at midnight on February 28th. We had more entry, over 150 entries, which is the most we've ever had. It was really exciting, in particular, that we had a huge increase in the high school category, which is one that had not had as much participation. And the results are starting to roll in. I got some of them today, so be checking your Twitter. We will be contacting the winners, but we already know we have winners from Blacksburg Middle School, Christiansburg Elementary School, and Margaret Beeks Elementary School. I'm still waiting on high school, so that's going out, and we will be welcoming those first-place winners at our April 3 meeting, so giving them the opportunity to stand in front of you and receive their prizes. I did get to go to the Harding Passion Fair, which was wonderful. It's nice to go back to one of my daughter's alma maters and see what they're doing, and it was wonderful. And then, of course, the other thing, last night, I did a And then, of course, the other thing, last night I did attend the budget session, which we'll be talking about.
Thank you. Well, what I did is attended CMS Black History Celebration, and it was a wonderful, wonderful event. Thank you to Cheryl B. Graves, Assistant Principal there. It had band, it had art, it had poetry, it had dance. Radford University came and did step dance. It was whole school involved, and, and it, you know, it was, it was amazing. I know it was a big undertaking to get all seven, eight hundred kids to sit in the auditorium and listen for, for an hour time, but it was a beautifully done event, so thank you. And then, Dr. Graves came and spoke as well. So, the other thing is, I attended Falling Branch Elementary School and read Strega Nona. It was a soup, bread and soup night, and it was a perfect wet yaki day for bread and soup. And reading Strega Nona brought a lot of memories, and I studied a little bit of Italian, so I can, I can say those words in that book. So, I have to use like connotation app to find out about those. And then, also, I went to Kips Elementary School and read Dr. Seuss' books for Ms. Cuzimano's class, and I, you know, realized one of the book was easier. Well, I picked the book, so it's, it's my fault probably, but one of them was, oh my goodness, it was long and a lot of, you know, tongue twister, rhyming words. And I, I think I survived, but I don't know what the kids thought about my rhyming. And then, the other one, I attended the School Board Office Youth Art and Music Reception as well as Harding Avenue Passion Project. This Passion Project idea, whoever's the brainchild is, it was very impressive, and I think so far I attended probably in four, five elementary schools, and they're all so very different. Topics are so very different, how they present so very different. Some is like super technology, some is just, you know, trifold and simple graphs and pictures, but they were all amazing intrigues, you know, how to stop your nail biting, and then how to put together a cookbook, and, you know, all the NFL. I learned, I think, you know, I'm gonna make my son very proud, because I learned all about NFL teams from a fifth grader, which was pretty impressive. So, it was, it was a fun, fun, fun month with a lot of activities. Anybody else would like to pitch in? Now, we will give the podium to our student representatives, Steven and Chad. What would you like to share from your schools?
You wanna go? I got it. Hi, my name is Steven Yang. I'm from Blacksburg High School. I actually didn't know I was coming to this meeting until like this morning, but I'm just gonna kinda highlight some stuff real quick. Last month, February, was Black History Month, and we had a really successful assembly at the end of the month where we got like clubs from all over the school, and they decorated shopping carts with kinda historical figures and quotes and stuff, and they filled up the carts with like paper towels and food and like toothpaste and stuff that we're gonna distribute to local communities that are in need. And so, yeah, that was pretty cool. And the, this week is Mental Health Awareness Week at our school, and each day we have a different mental health issue that we focus on, and at the end of the week, then we are having assembly. But tomorrow at 7:00 PM, we're having like a fundraising thing at Extreme Sport, Extreme Springs Trampoline Park. It's in Christiansburg, and it's like $10 for two hours of jumping, and if you have like kids that like jumping.
I won't, I won't be coming to that.
Okay. It's okay. Then, $2.50 goes to charity or, and mental, mental health awareness, like charity groups. And next, or this weekend, we're having senior-directed one-acts, which are kinda like theater programs that are completely directed by a pair of seniors. We have like five different plays. If you wanna come out to BHS at 7:00 PM on Friday or Saturday. And, yeah, I won my basketball game last Sunday. That's it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right, so at Auburn recently, our indoor track team, boys and girls, went to the state championship, and from what I hear, they did pretty well. Auburn wrestling team went to the state championship for the first time in 40 years, so that was, that was something. And our, our Auburn chapter of FBLA went to the regional conference, and 18 of our members placed in regions, and will be going to the FBLA State Conference. I have Witcham One, who placed first in my competition, so.
Congratulations.
But.
You gotta, you gotta brag.
Of course.
That's all. Thank you. That was wonderful. Next item, I think, is the grant proposal. Dr. Meyer?
Okay. MCPS has applied to the VDOE for advanced manufacturing equipment for the Governor's STEM Academy. This equipment will enable the academy to expand its use of drones for capturing data to create 3D topographic models. This grant's brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant proposal titled CTE Program Equipment for MCPS STEM Academy?
So moved.
Motion and second. Any discussions, any questions regarding the grant? Knott, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our grant.
Okay, next, as a part of our regular textbook review process, we've proposed textbooks for both math and social studies. Both sets of books have electronic resources that can be used. The purchase of the textbooks is based on having funds available. We'll ask you to approve these textbooks for adoption at the next board meeting.
Thank you. And the, the back room has the examples of the textbooks, if you'd like, if you'd like to take a look.
Very good. Next, this is a first of several policies brought to you for your approval tonight. These are the grievance procedures. All these policies remove probation as a form of discipline for the employee. This provides additional safeguards for all of our employees and brings our policies in line with our practices. And so, I'm bringing these policies tonight for approval. First is the 5-6.3.
May I have a motion to approve revised policy 5-6.3 as presented?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions?
Yes. So, once again, I will not be voting to approve this, because I believe it takes away the voice of our part-time employees, their issues that arise with their employment. I don't agree with the hearing officer aspect of it and how that will be handled or selected, and many others, as I have spoke about for the last couple of months. As we try to do things to support our employees by taking away this opportunity to grieve, we're not supporting our employees.
Any other concerns? And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next is Policy 5-2.4, dealing with hiring.
May I have a motion to approve revised policy 5-2.4 as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussions?
Now, we'll be voting for this, because it does take away the probationary stipulation in it, which supports our employees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our policy.
Okay, the next policy, 5-6.1, dealing with suspension.
May I have a motion to approve revised policy 5-6.1 as presented?
Motion. Second.
Any discussions, board members?
Yes, I'll be voting for this one for the same reason. It does help our employees.
Any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
And 5-6.2, employee discipline.
May I have a motion to approve revised policy 5-6.2 as presented?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions regarding this one?
Yep, because this also helps our employees. I will be voting yes for it, too.
Any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve that one as well.
Okay, next, our, our list of hearing officers is out of date for our teacher grievance process. This list will also be used for support staff. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the hearing officers for any employee grievance issues. And, you know, reminder, too, that with, with this process, the, the board can so choose to hear any of the, of the grievances. And then, if the hearing officers actually hear the grievance, and you do not agree with their decision or wanna know more, they can then come to you. So, it does not take you out of the process if you do not want it. Okay?
Yeah, that was my question. May I have a motion to approve the updated list of hearing officers as presented?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions, board members?
Yes, okay. Because I don't believe that one person as a hearing officer should have that much power and that they are selected by the board or the, the district. It's, again, like the fox watching the hen house. I believe there should be a three-person panel, one that the employee chooses, one that the district chooses, and one that both parties agree on to hear this, to hear whatever issue may be at hand. So, I will not be agreeing with the hearing officer, as it's reflected in the first policy that we voted on tonight.
Any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next, Policy 5-1.2, harassment. I'm bringing this to you for a first reading tonight. The proposed change to this policy clearly defines that harassment of a person based on their sexual orientation is considered harassment based on sex. As I've met with staff, I've received many questions about why sexual orientation is not included in our harassment policy. Our attorney has advised us that legally, sexual orientation is included in harassment on the basis of sex, based on case law. The policy change provides additional clarification for our employees. Tonight's the first reading. We'll bring it back to you on March 20th for your approval.
I did, you know, do a little reading as far as the difference between sexual orientation and sexual identity, and it seems like they're, can be kind of the same, or, but not in some cases, depending on the individual, so.
Do you mean gender identity?
Yeah, gender identity, I'm sorry, yeah. So, is that something we need to include also?
We asked that to our attorney, and he said, "Not at this time, because of pending cases across the country," that we would rather, you know, there's actually case law dealing with sexual orientation and how that is part of the, in terms of basis of sex, okay? However, the gender identity has not been determined by the courts at this time that that would be the case. And so, he advised us to, to hold off on adding that piece. But we're, I mean, of course, we've been waiting for two, you know, for a couple of years for court cases to, to go through the system and so we can get clarity in terms of that.
Okay, so my concern is, while we're waiting on the courts to say something, we have students within our school community who identify as, help me with the terminology. So, should we not have something in my, in the policy that's going to protect them, even if the courts haven't said, you know, this is what you do or don't do? They still should be protected.
Well, at this time, you know, you know, we've had the discussion that we have put administrative procedures in place to protect those students. We have a process in place when, when a student has, has, has come to us in terms of gender identity and certain requests, and we have accommodated all requests at, at this time for all students who have come to us in regards to that. And so, and that, that was advised by our attorney, that's, that is a good practice. In fact, we're, I, I would say we're head of most of school, school divisions around in actually having a process, you know, which we've had since, since last summer, and it seems to be going really well, actually.
Okay, so, and, and I agree that we're doing the right thing so far as far as accommodations, but this is talking about abuse and harassment. That's a, that's different from accommodation. That's how people are treated.
Right.
Or not.
I'd advise the board to listen to our school board attorney at this point and, and to wait. You know, you all can direct me any other direction you like, because there are some school boards already who have, I believe have, have made this, this change.
I think just the Menaces, Menaces City.
I think there's only one, two.
Fairfax, I think.
Yeah, there's a couple. And so, but, you know, you can direct me, but I'm, I'm inclined to listen to our school board attorney at this point in regards to that.
Our attorneys don't always, it's direction, it's not, this is what you should do, and we follow it blindly.
May I certainly agree with, with, with what Ms. Franklin is saying. I don't want our students to feel uncomfortable, be harassed at all. I mean, those students especially are already struggling internally, and so I don't know, I would like to see us do something to protect them. Is it a matter of wording that we need to make it more generic?
Um, no.
No.
We can put that language in there, and, and at, at your direction, I'll just need to know between now and the next meeting, how, if you would like me to change it and, and give me individual feedback from each of you as to what, what we'll, what we can actually, what we should actually do. I agree with you, Ms. Franklin?
As do I.
Yeah, we, I think we all agree.
We all agree.
Absolutely.
We definitely, our job is protect our students. And the faculty.
Absolutely, regardless.
That's what I was gonna say, so are we gonna add those young ladies that might be pregnant and also get harassed? Are we gonna add the people that are Goth and get harassed? Are we gonna add all that terminology as well? Because if we're gonna, if we're gonna blanket it, then why don't we use a terminology that blankets everything of a student that wants to choose to?
Express themselves.
Express themselves or be different, and sometimes saying expecting mother's not an expression. That's just a situation. But that gets a lot of, or of, you know, overweight, and all those type things get a lot of abuse and made fun of and accusations as well, sometimes if not more than some of the things we're discussing. So, you know, if we're gonna start doing that, then I think we need a term that, that talks about everything, that, that students go through.
I, I think we, we would have to be careful in how we do that. And because of my experiences, you know, I've had students request things to me as a former high school principal or in other positions, that if we start defining every single thing, or we say that we will not, basically what we're saying is, we will allow a lot of different things in our schools, which could be dis- basically what we're saying is we will allow a lot of different things in our schools, which could be disruption to our school. We gotta be careful as to how we actually define that and say that. And I can get direction from our attorney in terms of that. But this is like, this is a harassment policy and, you know, we do have in our school, you know, rules and regulations, anti-bullying policies as well. You know.
I mean, some of the things, you know, I think it's covered under examples of conduct which may constitute sexual harassment includes, and if you look at the fourth one, you know, comments about somebody's individual body. I mean, that, you know, pregnancy will be covered with that or or being, you know, overweight or, or, you know, underweight, anything in that nature. And I feel like some of them in terms of, you know, drawings and gestures and pictures on, you know, I mean, some of them I think already covered.
Let me remind you while we're doing this, again.
Yeah.
The Supreme Court has ruled that just that harassment based on sex does include sexual orientation. And in fact, our attorney prior to, I've asked him several times over the last couple of years about adding sexual orientation, he said there was no need to add sexual orientation to this policy because there's case law in the Supreme Court. But we've, we've been asked this several times by our current employees to please clarify this specific piece in terms of sexual orientation. And so, you know, I, I think it's a good recommendation. You know, even though we technically do not have to add this, it's already protected as as we have stated it. And so.
So this is just really documenting it.
It's a clarification of what it actually already includes. Right, and so, and 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 I am fine. In fact, Mr. King, our attorney, as you know, he said it actually gives us an extra layer of protection as a school division because we've actually placed it in our policy. And so, you know, that's why we we thought this would be a a good idea. And so we're not in favor of any harassment of any kind in any school, period.
Right, and and I think you're right, Ms. Karan, where you're, you know, you're talking about the examples.
Yeah, the definitions, accurate detail.
I think it covers a lot of.
This is not that we're adding the inclusion, we're not adding the inclusion
Right.
of sexual orientation. It's already included under our school personnel on the basis of sex. Supreme Court said that when you have that in your policy, the basis of sex, it also includes sexual orientation. Okay, and so it's more of a clarifying piece there because it's not clear what that actually would mean as well. You know, I, you know, I don't know how the court will rule in the future, but I would be inclined to think that it probably would, this sentence on basis of sex will also include gender identity at some point.
But it does not currently.
But it does not currently do that, right.
And that's the difference, unfortunately. It does not. And in fact, the Trump administration has withdrawn that definition under Title IX.
Yeah.
So.
And Office of Civil Rights pulling all the, all the.
Right, because of, yeah.
Any others?
That helps.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. So give me, you know, I would ask that you give me feedback through now the next board meeting as to your wishes, as to how we should proceed and how we should bring this back at the, at the next meeting. But I'm very in favor of adding this clause for our employees, just to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, so be clear, I'm not saying I'm not in favor. I think we should just go a step further.
Right.
Next item will be our unfinished business. Any matters previously introduced we'd like to discuss, board members?
Budget? For those of us who were there last night?
Budget.
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 Okay, go right ahead.
I mean, we'd said we were gonna discuss it, so this is the, would be the point.
I didn't, I didn't realize we're gonna discuss the budget.
Well, I mean, when in your superintendent's, you said we, you know, if we would be, if we discussed it, it would be later. I, I mean, I think we need to say something here. I don't think we can go after last night without saying something. You know, obviously, this is going to be my personal opinion. I was there last night. I have seen the proposal. I do thank Mr. Meadows and his staff. I do know they put in a lot of hard work to come to that decision. I have very mixed feelings about it. Obviously pleased that it's more than we got last year, at least the way it stands now. But at the same time, I'm disappointed it doesn't come close to meeting our minimal request. And I think a few things that we need to point out is even that minimal request would only give our teachers a one point five percent raise in a year where inflation is at two percent. So we're already falling behind. We know we're already behind most of our surrounding counties, particularly at the first third of our scale, the first ten years. We only exceed Giles County. So again, you know, we're not even maintaining status quo here. This is not even a status quo budget recommendation for us. And just to make sure everyone understands, it gives us one point five million, but it requires us to shift about six hundred and forty-two thousand in capital off until later in the hopes that we get it in their carryover towards the end of the summer, which means we can't put that money towards personnel and benefits. And that we will struggle just to make that one and a half percent and make up our teachers with the way it is now. People need to understand that we have several versions of the budget currently going through the state legislature. The best one by far is the House budget. And we need folks to contact their delegates and ask them to please support that version of the budget. Because even with that, we still can't do much more than help our employees. So what we are doing is putting off all of these capital expenses that really aren't capital expenses. We need to buy eight buses a year. That should be, that is a recurring expense. It might be capital, it might be buses, but it is still a recurring expense that we need to be budgeting in our regular budget every year. Same with capital maintenance, just fixing things that break. We're putting that off to the end of the summer and hoping we get the money. Bandwidth for our students. You know, the county budget is calling for them to get fifty-some thousand for their bandwidth. They serve three hundred and sixty employees with a few buildings. We're asking for eighty-four thousand for twenty schools and a few buildings. Twenty-five hundred employees, nearly ten thousand students, and a Chromebook in every hand in grades five through twelve. And we're only asking for eighty-four thousand dollars in bandwidth. These are the kinds of things that just can't continue. We can't keep pushing this off any longer. We're gonna end up like West Virginia, and I couldn't blame you if we did.
We're also down over half a million because the state says that our local economy is doing better, which means that the local economy should be picking up that over half a million dollars. So if the economy is better here and it's growing, why were they not able to complete all of our bare minimum budget request?
And if you paid attention to the numbers last night, if you've heard, obviously, the word tax increase gets bounced around. It's not in the recommendation. A one cent tax increase is seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what we're missing to get to the two point three, one cent. Twenty dollars a year on a two hundred thousand dollar house, one cent. Ten teachers, one cent would buy ten teachers. One cent would buy all the buses we need for a year. One cent would ensure we could afford to not touch our employees' benefits and have to cut them again, raising deductibles, raising premiums. One cent.
Or encourage your community to quit shopping online because five hundred thousand of that money also is because of online shopping.
Well, but the problem there is that the state is not recording it properly.
Well, and that might be, but whatever it is, we still don't have it. So that's an education piece that needs to get to the public. They need to understand, if you wanna order something, go to the store and order it. Because online shopping is killing our community. You know, and that's something that I want to talk about. That's part of it. It's part of it.
It's a small part.
Might not, it might be small, but still part of, pennies make dollars. You're saying a penny.
I can't make dollars, I'm sorry.
But I mean, you know what I'm saying? The small things add up, just like, for whatever reason, one cent.
There are a lot of things that could certainly change in this county. But that is one that's not in our control in that sense because the legislature needs to track this money down and make sure it's being sent back to our communities the way it's supposed to be. You should be able to shop online and have your taxes come back to the community where you live. You should not feel like you can't do that simply because the state can't properly track the money.
Understand, it should and could us, but it is what it is. And so we can make a difference in changing things like that to make a difference in the now. So those are little things that, since that meeting, I've learned it. I've, I've made a difference in the way I do things. Even with some of the ordering that I did and gone into the business and went, why didn't you come here and order it? This is, our business is taking a beating, having nothing to do with the county taxes. We're killing our businesses and they're leaving, so.
Well, that's true across the nation.
But it all adds together to make money to.
Question that affects our local merchants.
So I just think that something, sometimes people don't realize, and I think we need to.
But I think it can be an excuse too for politicians not stepping up when they need to.
Well, I said we should have asked for more to start off with and then maybe we would have gotten the two. But I'm itching, dying to get to West Virginia, and I'll just say that. Because unfortunately, folks were pushed to the point where they felt this is what they had to do to be able to survive, to live. And we're, we're right there too, you know? So if I could organize you guys, boy, oh, boy, I'd spend days and days doing it. And then I'd be right out there with you. Because it's ridiculous that we constantly have to beg to educate our children and to give them buses that are reliable to take them to and from school and buildings that will support the modern technology that they need to be able to survive in this global world that we live in. It's, it's sad. So at some point, there's gonna have to be a stand taken for public education. I said, West Virginia's doing a very good job of it. And unfortunately, that also means that our children are losing out on part of their education. But I don't blame the teachers for that, not at all. This county, they have stepped up year after year after year to try to meet the needs of the school system. And some point, the state and the federal level have to do their part. But they don't value education. They do not. There's no other way to put it. They don't value public education, which means they don't value our children. Because that's what public education does. It prepares our children to be able to take over this country. So we're just, we are digging this country into a hole, deeper and deeper. I don't get political here, so Korea and China and Russia are just waiting, waiting to step in and do the things that they want to do to be able to control this world. It's that simple. I hope anybody can be able to watch to see how that's all playing out. And I guess at that point, public education won't matter. But if we don't do something, you know, it's terrifying to me what is happening to our middle class, which has been the backbone of this country. We can't afford healthcare. We can't afford to educate our children. We can't afford to eat in many cases. And people don't realize how many people are hungry because our wages are not keeping up with inflation, which is exactly what brings me back to, we need to make sure that we're paying our teachers because it's, it is a cycle. If we're not preparing our children for the jobs, then there's no money. And those who are the middle-class working folks who have been the backbone of folks who stand up and speak out against all the stuff that keeps us separated as far as class in this country, which we don't like to talk, we don't have class, yes we do. Huge classism, very, very rich and poor, right? So all I'm gonna say is go West Virginia, and I'll be quiet.
Well, the theme that got expressed last night, to bring it back home, was in our county, funding the future. What better way to fund the future than through public education?
The kids are the future.
And so what we're asking, not just our supervisors, but our citizens, is do you value your future? Do you value your children? Do you value our education system in this county? And if you do, please try to make up for some of these losses. Yes, our county has stepped up. We're asking you to step up more until we can get these people at the state and federal level to do what they should be doing. Is it okay to just let our kids fall through the cracks in the meantime while we wait and fight that fight? I don't think it is.
I think that that's a very good and important point. If we wait to General Assembly make their mind, you know, whichever party is taking over regardless. You know, we can't wait. Everything is going in an incredible speed. Technology changing, kids are learning. Really cannot wait till they make their mind. So we, I mean, unfortunately, it is, it's on the local, local government shoulders to make up the difference. Till, I mean, we have to still keep pushing them, but we, we can't wait. I think it will be too late, like Ms. Franklin and Ms. Froggett said. You know, we don't wanna be in West Virginia's situation, or maybe we wanna be in West Virginia's situation so we can actually rally and demand. We definitely have to come up with something because every year seems like we need, you know, more or we are cutting more. And I think where the money is gonna come unless we have to put those couple cents in.
As you know, this Virginia is the eighth wealthiest state in the Union, the eighth.
That's always surprising to me.
Our teachers rank thirtieth in pay in the Union. But yet, our teachers provide a top-five education in the Union every year. Just the other day, the SAT results came out for the best scores in the country. Virginia's in the top five. You know, we're always there. So our teachers are doing their job, and they're doing it better than anyone else in the eighth wealthiest state in this country. But yet, they're paid thirtieth in this country. The state needs to pick it up, period.
I agree. They don't value our children. It's that simple.
Any other comments under unfinished business? We probably can't talk about this all night because, you know, it's very important and and hopefully we will get to a point that we don't have to worry about it, but we'll see. I mean, this discussion, of course, you know, last night, it was, it wasn't much discussion by the, by the Board of Supervisors per se. It was more like Mr. Meadows presented the proposed budget. So they will discuss next Monday, March twelve, so they will have more questions and. And so we will, you know, hope to get that, you know, 1.5 million, that's for sure.
And there is a public address time that night, for anybody who's willing to come. And they all have email addresses too.
And of course, last night, we did not have a, it was just a work session, no public address section there was. So, but we had a wonderful present, presence of our teachers, which was great. So moving on, new business, board members.
Yes, I'd like to talk recess.
Yes.
You gonna go play now?
Yeah.
Can we, yeah, look into how many minutes of recess our kids are getting?
I've already got, yeah, I've already got it in our notes, and we'll be looking into recess. And, and I certainly agree with what was said tonight. I traveled to Finland last summer, and that's one of the number-one things that they emphasized was most elementary classrooms, they, they're, they work forty-five minutes, and they do recess for fifteen minutes every single hour. Now, they may not always go outside. I can't promise that in Finland, but due to the weather, it's dark sometimes all day. But, but they, they go outside, or they, or they at least have some type of recess, some type of physical activity to move around. And, and I too believe it's important. I think we need to explore that and look at that. And, and so we, we will be looking, looking at that and following that, that bill as well to see what will be allowed. Because, you know, what is correct is that we do, our hands are tied for required time in certain content areas during the day. And, you know, movement is learning. We can move and learn. I mean, that's, that's for sure. And our kids, our kids definitely need that. And so, so yeah.
Well, for me, I mean, because I've kind of got on this bandwagon like my whole board term. I mean, I've always, and when I go to conferences, I always go to sessions that tend to have that until I got really kind of burnt out because it seemed to always go in the direction of lunches. And, you know, although I know, and every time I start talking about it, then we bring in the, you know, and I'm like, I'm not being negative. But we have this, for me, we have more nutritional lunches now than we ever have, but our students are still heavier than they ever were. So help me understand, you know, when I was a kid, which was in the Dark Ages or whatever, you know, we didn't have all these nutritional lunches, and kids were thinner then than they are now. So, you know, help me understand, it's not...
It's not the food.
It's not the food. It's not the lunches. It's not school. We're not having the activity level. Because I mean, when I was in recess, you know, you had to run your six hundred before you could even play.
Exactly.
And I just think now, oh, we can't make kids do that. Well, you could walk it, you could jog it, you could run it, you could, however, you had to get around it. You know, and I just think we've, we're missing it. We've missed it by taking all those things and coddling and saying, oh, poor, you know what? They, these kids have got to get some exercise, or we're killing them. Because that's part of, in society, what's happening with our obesity problem. And whether we want to admit it, we have it. So, you know, I'm all about that. So thank you for bringing it up.
It's about providing time. You know, teachers, often do you go to recess and tell kids, go play? You don't have to tell them to go play. Kids naturally go play. I mean, they just do it. You don't have to tell kids to do that. I mean, even today, kids are still kids, and they like to move, like to have fun and do recess. They just do. And so, so yeah, I, I totally agree, and hopefully, some flexibility will be allowed. Because if it is, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to accommodate that, absolutely. So...
If nothing else, we can move to announcements and information. Any information or any announcements you would like to make?
I know she didn't give a chance to give it, but maybe you know the date of the, that Martha Ann was going to announce for the...
I think it's the twenty-fifth.
The what?
I think it's the twenty-fifth.
I would like to know.
High school event?
The...
It is Friday, March twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
From a vast test in one thirty, and the president's, the graduate center that...
Used to be Donaldson Brown, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
I think that's what they said. What are you talking about?
It is about the, you know, students going to Virginia Tech for diversity activities through dialogue on race and Virginia Tech and AACP group.
Yeah, Virginia Tech and AACP.
Yeah.
One more bit of new business I wanted to ask the board about, if you had any questions or clarifying questions. March fourteenth, there's a national movement for a walkout. And we've sent, you know, we're, you know, as a school, and our policy does not allow us to, to promote it or encourage it. But, you know, we've sent some information to parents, our principals and our teachers this week. We, you know, in terms of, I believe, the planned pieces from ten o'clock to ten seventeen. And, you know, we're allowing our, our students to do a walkout if they so choose at the high school. And they, they've actually, the student government organizations and the principals, they're, they're working together to create a safe space for that and a supervised space for that. And so we've given that information. Of course, there's, there's an event that's happening in Blacksburg and that we're not, we're not a part of, but we're gonna have folks that, that want to go to that, our students, and we're just following our normal checkout procedures where parents will need to check their, their students out. And so, any questions about that? And they're all excused absences as well.
Okay.
Okay?
So...
As long as they come back.
Yeah.
As long as they come back, yeah, right.
Check the students out. So is that a note that is...
Yeah, at the high school level, it's a note.
Right.
At the elementary and middle school level, it has to be a parent that checks a student out for checking back in because some, some will not choose to even go to school because our elementary day starts at nine fifteen. And so we anticipate some elementary parents not even having their kids checked in. If that's the case, the parent will have to be with the elementary kid to check in. For middle and high school, you can have a note to check in later on. So... And we've coordinated with the local police departments. And they'll be providing extra security on those days at different places.
Does every student that's taken, involved in it understand exactly what it is that they're doing?
I don't feel like that's...
I mean, that's...
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's our, I would caution us that it's our job to actually do that, you know? However, I would say that, you know, our students are pretty aware. I really think they're, they're more aware, you know, I think we need to give them more credit than, we should give them credit, that they're aware of what's happening.
But I mean, I know for myself, I kind of liked, I heard some students say, you know, we ought to have a walkout on, students don't, don't want to shoot your fellow students, you know? I mean, they're like, you know, instead of, that's why I was wondering, do they really understand exactly what it's, the walkout is...
Means.
Means and is...
Right.
I, I don't, I can't say for individuals, but I'd say most of our students know exactly what it's about. We have pretty smart students. They know what's going on. Social media right now, I mean, they're there.
Especially with the level of the youth involvement and leading. This effort has taken a whole new level of meaning for children across this country. Very proud of them. So if we have students who want to participate but aren't able to leave the building, you know, what is, what is the, what's gonna be happening in the classrooms?
Say that again?
Yeah, okay. So I'm a student and...
You don't want to leave?
And no, I do want to leave, but I can't leave because my parent has said, no, or I'm not checking you out. I can't be there to check you back in. But, you know, if I could, I would, but I can't.
For the students, for the students who want to walk out for the seventeen minutes, they will not need, in the high schools, they will not need a note to do so. It, it is understood that most students will do, will participate. We're not requiring a note. We're providing a safe place with adult supervision of that area. Okay? They will not need a note. If you want, if a student wants to participate in the event that's happening in Blacksburg, where it's actually off school property, if a student wants to leave school property, then they will have to follow normal checkout procedures. If they're not, if they're just walking out and not leaving school property, then that, that is being allowed. Okay?
And I think one is just walk out for seventeen minutes, and the other event is really between nine o'clock and almost eleven o'clock that they plan because they have some speakers planned. So that, you know, that one is different in terms of leaving the school property.
And that is, and that is leaving school property. It's planned to be on the, the fields, which are town, which is town property in Blacksburg, Kipps Field. There, that's not our property. And they've actually, we met with the group that's organizing this past week, and they actually have permits to actually hold that. And so... Any other questions about that?
Any other questions?
Okay, so for our, our employees who may want to participate, I know there's a, with our teachers, the issue around substitutes or how classes will be...
Covered.
Covered, yeah. Is there, is there a plan there?
Well, for one, we do have a school board policy that, that states that our employees cannot be involved in local activities during, during the school day. You know, we have talked to our principals, especially the ones that are, we're gonna have teachers that will, per se, walk out to supervise students during that seventeen minutes. Okay? And, but our, our principals are organizing that building by building, and, and they're being flexible in terms of that.
Any other questions? Moving on, any other announcements? And moving on...
I'll, I'll just, again, go back to this. I just want to make sure, again, that our employees, because this involves them to...
I understand that.
That there's not gonna be big issues if they choose to uphold their First Amendment rights.
Our first priority is, is the safety and protection of kids and coverage of classrooms. That is our first priority. And that needs, that is, that needs to occur first.
And that's being coordinated at the school level.
At the school level, and I'm sure it will be taken care of. I have faith in our principals, they will make sure that happens. But our students are our first priority during the school day and make sure that they're being supervised. So...
Any more questions, announcement, information, addition to new business? Now that I'm moving on, upcoming school board meetings. Next one is on the twentieth. And I guess we have to make a decision. We are holding that March twenty-seventh budget work session for sure or not? It's not optional, right? It wasn't optional. Or was it optional at one point?
It was optional at one point.
Yeah, that, I think it is optional, but I mean, I...
And we don't have to decide, but I thought it's coming up, so...
I'm not, I'm not sure that we're gonna need that meeting at that point. And we'll, we'll have to wait and see. The reason is because we're not gonna have state numbers at that time. And we're not gonna have the county's final numbers at that time. You know, what we're working from right now are, are numbers from the county administrators' proposed budget. And we're working from a Senate version of the budget and a House version of the budget. And they're rather far apart.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we can talk again about it on March twentieth. But, you know, definitely will, in, during the March twentieth meeting, we will talk about the budget in that meeting.
That's what I guess I was asking also.
And we will start looking at, okay, if this is a scenario, this is what it looks like in terms of, you know, if this passes, we'll give you an update and what that looks like if it is as we see it today. Okay? You know, unfortunately, there's not a lot of money to talk about. I mean, it's really not. And so that's the unfortunate piece. You know, and, and I've said from, since I presented my budget, priority or teach, or, or school employee raises and getting teachers back on the right step and for our insurance costs not to go up for the employee and for us to cover that. And the way it looks now, I, I can tell you, we are about a hundred thousand dollars short of doing those three things based on the county manager's budget. So...
If we get all 1.5.
If we got the entire 1.5, correct. Yep, and we, and...
And we divert 652, 642,000 of ours to carry out.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Right.
That you hope shows up.
Right. We're rolling the dice.
Sounds good. Then moving on, I think next item will be entering the closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter and two student matters as authorized by Section 2.2-371, one of Code of Virginia?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in closed session.